Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 9, 2019, regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council. Prior to our roll call this evening, I would like to indicate to those in the audience, anybody who would like to speak to any item on the agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, you're more than welcome to fill out a speaker request form, bring that forward, give that to our city clerk Lynn Fizikas, and we'll get you on at the appropriate time. With that being said, roll call, please.
Morris.
Here.
Fanouken.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. Item C on the agenda, if you're following a hard copy, is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
The agenda is approved as printed. Public participation. We have one person who would like to speak tonight, and that is Steve Capitan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Chief Petragallo for the way that he handled the controversy over the arrest of Alante McDowell. Chief, you did the right thing by turning over the investigation to the state police, being transparent, by releasing the dash cam video, and being willing to listen to the community's concerns and answer their questions. The next challenge on this matter will be on your desk when the state investigation is done. I have every confidence that you'll handle it well.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, that was the only individual who would like to speak tonight under public participation. We now have a presentation. Lynette Spencer from Adventure Works. She is going to present the FY 2019 Human Services Funding Report by herself, and she is the Executive Director of Adventure Works. Lynette, hi.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, for having me and for the council's time and attention tonight. We certainly, at Adventure Works, we certainly appreciate the city council's support for our program and all of the work that Joanne Rouse does to coordinate this human services funding. Also, thanks to Bill for your support and vocal pledge to support the nonprofits in our community. I wanted to talk about a little bit about youth mental health statistics tonight, just to sort of frame our cause a little bit for you. The Center for Disease Control, we're talking, these statistics are going to be relevant to three to seventeen-year-olds nationwide, and that includes 7.4 percent of these children have a diagnosed behavioral problem, 7.1 percent of them have a diagnosed anxiety problem, and 3.2 percent of children age three to seventeen years old have a diagnosed depression problem. Among children two to eight years old, one in six of these U.S. children have, or 17.4 percent, have a diagnosed mental, behavioral, or developmental disorder. And to complicate youth challenges even further, when the household income falls below, when it goes into the low category or into poverty, these numbers escalate dramatically, approximately three times as high for children who are living in poverty, which brings, of course, the necessity for nonprofit and for city government, among lots of other funding sources, to come together to support our community. And so, our organization, based on these numbers and what we know about our community, we have some primary goals that we address in these areas, and one of those is to reduce stigma associated with mental health. Our programs are geared for partnership, adventure, getting outdoors, getting away from screens outside of the indoor environment, and away from the sit-down-talk-therapy adult expectation of kids when it comes to working with them and their challenges. And so, we look at stigma and trying to get away from, you know, making it fun, engaging kids in the activities. We provide these positive experiences to enhance their learning. We alleviate the poverty of positive experiences through our work that comes along with financial poverty, and we provide an alternative approach, as you well know, if you've read our materials or seen our work. I have a video queued up that I would like to show. I think the media room has it ready. It's ninety seconds, just sort of exemplifies our work for you.
Sixteen-year-old Rosie and her family carried the weight of being homeless for more than a year emotionally, physically, and spiritually. Despite the best efforts made in traditional counseling, Rosie's depression was becoming chronic. When she started at Adventure Works, she found herself in a kayak rather than a counselor's office. She thought it odd the counselor didn't ask her for a report of her feelings about being homeless. Rather, she paddled right by Rosie's side, focused on accomplishing the task at hand. In her words, it was "doing" versus "venting." The adventure setting allowed Rosie to see the counselor as a partner instead of a perceived authority figure. The here-and-now experience of adventure therapy helped Rosie focus on what she could control, developing positive self-talk and perseverance. She gained a sense of belonging, the freedom to make her own choices, trust in herself and others, and enjoyment during some of the worst times of her life. She even felt relief from her depression, and during these experiences became empowered to imagine a successful future. Adventure therapy provided the power for this positive change. Your gift to Adventure Works supports youth like Rosie. Boys and girls of all ages are assisted in overcoming challenges and becoming healthy adults through adventure-based counseling. Thank you for considering a donation of any amount and for helping to make a positive difference in their future.
So, this video was made based on the story of a gal that went through our program when she was fifteen years old, in the very early stages. We started our program in 2010, and she came into play about 2012, 2013, and she did go on to beat homelessness, her family transitioned out of the shelter, and she has now obtained a master's degree. She was the one that wrote the script for that video that you just saw. So, I just, I wanted to emphasize the important work that we do as, with youth in our community. The other thing that I just want to emphasize for you tonight is the importance of our partnerships. As you're, you're very familiar with our University Village Collaboration and the funding that we've received from the city and the support through multiple channels, but I wanted to highlight a few other community partnerships that we have, which I think will demonstrate our commitment to the community as a whole. We work with the DeKalb Schools. We have seven groups currently starting this school year, seven different groups in multiple school districts, three of which are in the DeKalb Schools, at grade school, middle school, and high school level. We work with YSB and the Police Department, as well as Juvenile Court Services and neighboring police departments in the Early Risk Assessment Program, as well as DeKalb's Compass Program, which Chief Petragallo and I were just talking about at the break. We work with NIU through both the University Village Collaborative, as well as the Outdoor Adventures Program. You've had Christine Lagatola here talking with you about some of the environmental things going on in the cleanup efforts. We have a staff sharing program between her staff and mine. We also have a really nice collaborative that we've built up over the years with funding sources. So, we're looking, from the early days in 2010, when I started the program, we had me funding my part of it, and the Mental Health Board buying into my idea. And today, we have at least twenty-five different funding sources that we've been able to utilize and partner with over the nine years that we've been in service to the community. And finally, we partner with the parents. We really appreciate the parents' trust in our services and their, to bring their children to us and allow us to take their children outside and do risky things is quite a compliment to us and something that we really value. We have, just wanted to put a plug in for, back to that two-to-eight-year-old statistic, we have a new program starts tomorrow. Very excited. Six children enrolled in our Little Adventures Program, and that is a four- and five-year-old kindergarten readiness, social-emotional skill-building program that we're starting on Tuesday and Thursday mornings. So, we're going to fill up our daytime when other kids are in school. And then, we also have, and that's recently been accredited, along with our full program, became accredited in 2017, so now every time we add a new program to our service, we have to put that program itself through accreditation, just like the original overall organization, it has been accredited. So, it keeps us in line. It doesn't let us, our accreditation slows us down a little bit from creating and starting new things without thinking too much about them. Glad that wasn't in place in 2010, because we may not be here if somebody had put that limitation on me, but now it's a good thing. We're looking at, very intentionally, this program's been in the works for three years, so we're really excited to roll it out tomorrow. And the other new thing that we have is a Low Elements Course. If anybody's driven by our property, we have put in a Low Elements Teams Challenge Course that's going to allow school districts to take field trips to our place, other youth community groups doing both positive youth development, adventure therapy, and just simple team-building fun for lots of different kids that weren't served before. So, I'm happy to take any questions from the council or anybody here.
You know, unless there are any other questions, I thank you for all you're doing and for, you know, as a relatively, relatively new social service agency, human service agency, we're just glad that we're able to support you in a, in a small way, but hopefully a meaningful way. I was very interested, I received today on my personal email at home, your, I guess it's your electronic newsletter, and it was excellent. I don't know if you've shared that with every council member. If you have not, did anybody else receive that today? Okay, what I will do is share that, if you don't mind.
Okay, sure.
With my fellow council members and our city manager, and who has the option, of course, to send that to anybody else, so.
Thank you. I will take that back as a compliment to my staff.
That's a compliment, right. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
There are no mayoral appointments this evening. We move along to the consent agenda. All items are enacted by one motion unless a member of the council wishes to take one of the items off the agenda. Is that the case with anyone? If not, I would entertain, first of all, let me read the following titles in their entirety. Our consent agenda tonight comprises of minutes of the meeting of the whole meeting of August 12, 2019, minutes of the regular city council meeting of August 12, 2019, minutes of the special joint meeting of the city council committee of the whole and finance advisory committee of August 16, 2019, number four, minutes of the regular city council meeting of August 26, 2019, and accounts payable and payroll, number five, accounts payable and payroll through September 9, 2019, in the amount of $1,875,953.15. I'd entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdam, seconded by Alderman Favor. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. H, public hearings. There are no public hearings scheduled, so we move on to considerations. Item I on your agenda. Number one, consideration of a Series 2010 bond refunding. And I'd like our city manager, Bill Nicholas, to speak to this item, please.
Thank you, and then I'm going to yield to Elizabeth Hennessy, who I'll introduce in just a moment. As I say in the background, the city's 2010B general obligation refunding bonds are callable on January 1, 2020. When a bond becomes callable, the issuer, in this case, the city, may redeem or pay off the bonds prior to the date of maturity. If the issuer does not have the capital to pay off the debt, we don't, new GO refunding bonds may be issued at present-day interest rates to call, excuse me, to pay off the callable debt. We have this opportunity tonight partly because Elizabeth Hennessy, who's the Managing Director of Public Finance at Raymond James Incorporated, reminded us of this and has been working with us to set this up for your review tonight in this consideration. I'm going to yield to Elizabeth, who would like to make a few comments.
Thank you, Bill. Quick, short presentation summarizing the opportunity to refund the Series 2010B for some savings. First of all, this is a five-year history of our municipal market data AAA index, and the purple line at the bottom is the short-term yield, but the more important one is the red line, which is the ten-year MMD, and the green line, which is the ten-year U.S. Treasury. We are down around, and near historically low interest rates, again, that we haven't seen since 2016, so that brings upon us a really nice opportunity to save the district some money in conjunction with the call date on those bonds. Here's the one-year MMD, just for your reference. Next, I just want to go over the several outstanding bond issues that you have. I apologize for the small print for the audience. So, the 2014 bonds, you only have three payments left on those. Those are non-callable and were refunded in 2014. 2013B, those have only four years. The 2013A bonds are callable in 2023, so hopefully, if the market's strong, we'll have an opportunity at that time to refund those. 2012A, also callable in 2023. The 2010C bonds are non-callable and are going to be paid off in really four more short years. And then, the 2010B bonds, in the middle of this page, are the ones we're talking about here. They're callable on January 1, 2020, and they can be refunded within ninety days of that call date. Since the Tax Reform Act came in, we can no longer refund bonds in advance of the call date on a tax-exempt basis, so that's why we're waiting until we get within ninety days. So, the 2010A bonds, three more years on those. Those are not callable. And then, here's just a graphic of the district's outstanding debt service payments by type. They're all general obligation bonds, but payable from different sources of the city. So, the results, or the preliminary results that we anticipate with this refunding is savings of about $520,000 over the life of the bonds. So, that's kind of an average annual of around $60,000. We like to look at the savings as a ratio, present value savings divided by the amount of bonds refunded. In public finance, we like to see that ratio north of 3%. Here, that ratio's 12.4%, so that's, it means it's a very strong refunding. We're basically trading in bonds with a 4.53 rate for new bonds with a rate currently estimated around 2.16%. So, that's where you're getting your savings. Also, we'll just add, we're not stretching those bonds out any further nor shortening them up. We're keeping them the exact same life as when they were originally issued. So, the next page looks at cost of issuance and the type of sale we're recommending. There's two general types of sales. There's a public offering, where you get the bonds rated, and you sell the bonds to investors, whether they're individuals or institutions. Then, there's a private placement, which you don't get the bonds rated, and you go through a big process, in essence, where you're asking for input from the local banks, what various rate they would charge you to purchase the bonds. So, given that the district's rating is still good rating, A1, but as you know, Moody's kind of has you on a negative outlook, as it does many, many cities in Illinois right now, we suggest it's more economical to go the private placement way, especially given that local investors and local banking institutions in particular are familiar with the city, understand your credit, and the costs are so much less, as you see in this chart. The costs are almost half as much as a public sale. So, also, given the size of the issue and the payback, which is essentially the next four, five years, those items also go into our recommendation to go towards a private placement with a local bank. So, with that, I'll pause and see if the council has any questions.
Okay, so the recommendation is to refund through the private placement process. We have the background. We've got it here in front of us, and we appreciate that. Any questions? Alderman Fanouken.
Heard today that, you know, at the next Fed meeting, there's a good chance that the interest rate may be lowered again. Will that have a positive impact for us, potentially?
Yes, it does. Because there's been so much talk about the Fed, and I think the Fed last week hinted at the fact that it would lower rates by about 25 basis points, that tends to get built into our market already, but the timing of this is really perfect, because once, assuming the council approves the ordinance tonight, we will put together a term sheet and go out to the banks and ask for bids, you know, in the next ten days post the Fed decrease. So, the timing is really perfect.
Thank you. Any other questions? Elizabeth, thank you very much for your report. City Manager Nicholas, any further comments on your part?
No.
Okay, there's, do we need a motion on this tonight?
No, action comes up later in the agenda.
Okay, very good. So, is there consensus that this makes sense for us?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Number two, the consideration of minor reorganizations in the Community Development and Public Works Departments, and City Manager Nicholas will speak to this item, please.
Right, I presented the council with a rather detailed background here. I'm not going to repeat it all. I just wanted to say that this has two pieces to it. Some is filling holes and shoring up the Community Development Department in certain areas, in particular, in the Building Department area, so that we can do, be more effective both in our new construction and also our property maintenance inspections. Now, the Community Development side, or, excuse me, on the Public Works side, what we're doing is taking something that, according to our org chart, is sort of an unwieldy situation. We have a Public Works Department that combines administration, street, water, utility, engineering, mass transit, airport operations, all this under one manager. It's just untenable. So, what I proposed, and also to provide some opportunity for strong leadership, and we have good leadership right now at the Assistant Director and the Superintendent level, is to create two pieces out of that one rather unwieldy piece, appointing Andy Rye as the Director of Streets and Facilities, and Brian Favor as Director of Utilities and Transportation. In both cases, there is no net increase in the overall budget. We have been continuing to attrition some positions, and we did both in the Community Development and also in the Public Works Department, and we are covered, so to speak, with some savings, which we will take out of the budget when you finally see it presented to you in the next month or so.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? Again, this is one of your primary responsibilities as our city manager.
And I present it to you tonight because technically, there is an org chart in the budget, and I adjusted the positions a little bit in the Building Department. I want, in the interest of transparency, to present it to you in detail.
Did you want a motion and approval of this?
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve this consideration.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdam, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
I'm fortunate in that the first item, number one, did not require a vote, because we had somebody who would like to speak to that, and that's Steve Capitan, on the consideration of the Series 2010 bond refunding. Steve, do you want to?
I could wait until the other, until it comes up on the ordinance.
Okay, very good, yeah, because it is going to come up. We're going to have to vote on that, right. Thank you. Okay, now, we go to J, Resolutions. The first resolution, 2019-133, authorizing the sale of real property located in the corner, at the corner of First Street and Locust Street, and that's pin number 08-23-158-034, and this is in the amount of $119,500. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Smith, and I will say that Alderman Fagan has recused himself because of a, an interest with this, with this particular, with one of the particulars in this resolution. So, it's been moved and seconded. I'm going to ask City Manager Nicholas to speak to this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Back on August 26th, at the last regular meeting, we had a list of some properties that proposed to put to market, and the council supported that. This is one of those. This is at Locust and North First Street. On August 28th, the listing documents were completed, and these properties were listed for sale. I have a typo I just noticed on, most of the way down on page six, it says August 20th. That would have been interesting. It's on August 30th, the broker, in this case, Miller Real Estate, received a proposal from Plaza DeKalb LLC for the list price, right on the money, $119,500. The intent is to construct a small parking lot there that will accommodate the residents of Plaza DeKalb. And as you recall, when we were talking about downtown parking and so forth, there was, the council made some adjustments to try to accommodate the future residents in some of the more remote downtown parking lots. This will help a great deal in that, and the, pleased that the developer of that property has stepped up. Are we foregoing an opportunity to see a beautiful building there? We are not. As I explained in the background, we have an NFR, which is a No Further Remediation Letter for this property from the IEPA, but they made it very clear when they gave us this, not only can we not allow a well there, as if we would, we wouldn't, but also, it's clear that if there is to be an excavation down to footing level, and you'd have to go down, they have to be, frost footings have to be a minimum of 42 inches below. You dig down, total of about 48 inches minimum, and all of that earth would have to be literally removed from the site, plus you more than likely would find further contamination under some of the built structures, the sidewalk, and maybe even the street. It's probably best to leave well enough alone and leave that skin there. So, frankly, a parking lot with a further shell over that area would be just what the doctor ordered from an environmental standpoint. So, I strongly recommend that we proceed with this.
Any discussion?
I tickled that we got the offer.
Yes. Any discussion? Alderman Fanouken.
I'd just like to thank John Pappas and his son for taking this step forward. You know, one of the biggest complaints we heard as we moved forward with this project was parking, and this will help alleviate some of those concerns downtown.
Alderman Smith.
Mr. Nicholas, how many spots do we anticipate? We might as well get that out.
No, I have a design-
No, I haven't designed it yet, but I estimate about 20 spots. We'll, we'll have to work that out, and we have, we have codes, obviously, to do that. There is a easement for about a five-foot sidewalk, uh, that's, um, tight to the Egyptian, that takes a few feet out of whatever can be done, but otherwise, uh, I'm sure all of it that can be used would be used for this purpose.
Yeah, and I also second Mr. Alderman Fanouken's, uh, forthcoming with Mr. Pappas's son. Parking downtown is needed, and that's, uh, thank you.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan. And Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
And again, I would echo to John and Forty Pappas back there that we thank you for that. It'd be a great use of that property, and, uh, thank you for, uh, for that, for moving forward. Okay. Uh, I think Alderman Smith is probably going to recuse himself now from this next resolution, because, uh, it involves VAC. And that is Resolution 2019-134, authorizing the third and final renewal of the Voluntary Action Center Transit Provider Contract for a one-year term from October 1, 2019, through September 30, 2020, with an allocation of state fiscal year 2020 state and federal grant funds not to exceed $3,674,593. I'd entertain a motion, please.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Verbic. No one has indicated a desire to speak to that item, so we'll turn it once again to city manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank Marcus Cox, our transit coordinator, for his work on this in all matters transit, uh, day in, day out. He does a fine job. Uh, this is fairly straightforward. We've had a number of renewals. This is the third of three one-year renewals with the Voluntary Action Center to continue to provide services that are described here. VAC provides local match funds, and the chart that's on page seven does show, um, a significant contribution to this cause over a number of years. Uh, the Downstate Operating Assistance Program, uh, provides, uh, the rest, and we, uh, recommend your support.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That mo- resolution passes. Thank you. Number three, Resolution 2019-135, authorizing a highway authority agreement as prescribed by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency with DeCalb Forge Company regarding previous ground contamination at 1832 Pleasant Street. Motion, please.
So moved. Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager Nicholas, please.
Yes, uh, as I mentioned in the background, the, the matter before you tonight allows the DeCalb Forge Company to receive that NFR letter that we were just discussing in another context. Um, the, uh, one of the conditions here is that in the event that there's ever any, um, reconstruction of the adjacent public way, that if we identify further contamination, uh, we are in line for some compensation to help repair whatever we find, or to, to address whatever we find. So, we feel this is an appropriate, uh, agreement and serves both parties. We recommend your approval.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
And now, we move forward on two ordinances, uh, one first reading and one second reading. We'll take K ordinances, second reading first. Ordinance number 2018-057, authorizing a zoning map amendment from the L1 Light Industrial District to the PDC Plan Development Commercial District, and approving a plan development preliminary and final plan agreement at 204 North Fourth Street and 420 Oak Street, known as Agora Tower, Mooney Property, by PNG Development LLC. A motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Smith. Once again, Alderman, uh, Fagan is recusing himself from this discussion. City manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a familiar project.
Yes, it is.
And, uh, I want to thank, uh, the Plan Commission for the number of times that they have reviewed this and in process, uh, Dan Olson for taking our point and helping to massage the development of this. And, of course, the, the development, uh, uh, group that PNG Development, which has been very easy to work with all along, uh, were trying to work with us and, and negotiating a lot of details on a, uh, really an enormous commercial redevelopment project, and the largest that we can remember, probably. We're, we're looking at, as you know, references a number of times, some large, hopefully, industrial prospects in, in our business parks to the south and east. And when it comes to the downtown core and more generally our commercial zoned areas, this, this is the El Dorado. In terms of the impact to local taxing bodies, which includes us, in terms of jobs, both in the construction and over the long haul, the background has been presented to you before. I've abbreviated it even further. You understand the, the, the tax question and the adjustments in the design and so forth. In the two weeks since this was held over, a couple of things, a couple of very minor modifications were made, which I identified in the background, uh, to bring this into alignment with, uh, the, um, Plaza de Calb and the Egyptian agreements with respect to a couple of things. Uh, one is, uh, what happens in the future if there's a bank? We were looking for a position on the, the mortgage, which we would have as, as part of that, uh, development agreement. And a subordination agreement usually follows once the bank's been identified, and, and the, the details for that are, are in the agreement. Also, the estimate, the estimated dollars for the TIF eligible tasks were just that, and it occurred to us, uh, that if we put a hard number in for what it was gonna be for the demolition or some other piece of this, really hard, uh, to the number, uh, number, that, uh, we would be coming back to you if it was a little higher, a little bit lower, for you to approve again, and it just might go on for months, and that isn't what you intended. It isn't what we intended. Uh, also, uh, here we are. It's, it's almost always, almost already the middle of September. Uh, this is not gonna be built, uh, by spring. Uh, there's gonna be, hopefully, some demolition work and some, some, uh, environmental remediation this fall yet and through the winter, uh, but, uh, the actual construction awaits the final detailed construction plans, which obviously have to come through to be reviewed and approved. And, uh, 18 months is usually the time period for this. That's what's in the agreement, and the clock starts ticking when the permit is issued. And I think for a, a project of this size, 113,000 square feet, that's, that would, that's a very aggressive schedule, even, even at 18 months, so we've made that adjustment. We, uh, at the staff level, heartily recommend this to you for your approval.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Alderman Verbic.
Well, my hesitation and no vote previously was related to, uh, bringing more apartments to DeCalb and not having any, uh, accountability for what happens to those apartments in the future. We're currently faced with significant issues in the city, and, uh, after, uh, significant consideration, you know, my, my point was, and I should've been clear last time, is that I would prefer that companies would be locating to DeCalb, wanting to build buildings, and one of the other things that they would like are apartments above those companies for their employees to reside in and whatnot. This is somewhat the opposite. It's, we're incentivizing apartments and not businesses, per se, although the developer certainly is a, is a business in and of itself. So, I, I guess with further consideration, I'm going to support this, because it really is, after research and consideration, that we do really need to step up. Our apartment stock is just, uh, really becoming challenging, and we need to have that product available to the community, upscale apartments. And I guess it's our responsibility for, uh, us to make sure they stay upscale. And I found that, that we have ways, and then our future councils would have ways of making sure that those apartments stay upscale.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan. McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That ordinance is approved, and again, to echo the comments made, uh, to the Pappas family for, uh, stepping up, continuing to step up. Thank you very much. Look forward to this. Okay, now, we have an ordinance on first reading, and that is the ordinance 2019-058, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $4 million general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2019, as had been explained by Elizabeth Hennessy. Uh, I know we need a motion and a second, and then I'm gonna ask Steve Capitan to make his comments, and we'll see if city manager Nicholas wants to add anything to that. First of all, a motion to approve this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Bill, I don't know if you want any, if you have anything else to say to this, but I would like Steve Capitan to...
Let Steve speak.
Yeah, Steve, why don't you come up and, uh, you wanted to speak to this. I apologize for not getting you on at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mayor. Either one's appropriate. They're, they're the same subject. And then this is where the vote is taking place. I'd like to offer my thanks to the city's bond consultant, Ms. Hennessy, uh, for including net present value figures in her analysis. I would encourage the staff to use net present value in their analysis of proposals that they make to the council. In the background, it says that in December 2010, the city issued $3.9 million in general obligation refunding bonds to refinance a prior debt at a lower interest cost. And it goes on to say, "An outstanding principal balance of $3.9 million existed as of December 31, 2018, along with an additional $1.2 million in interest due through 2028." If I'm reading that right, it sounds as if no payments were of interest or principal were made on those bonds over the last 10 years. I think that if, since the proposal is to pass this on first and second reading, I'd like, uh, to ask, uh, since I can't ask those questions directly, I'd like to ask my Alderman to ask that, uh, question for me. And I think it's appropriate that we hear that before this is passed. And then also, too, um, what is the dollar cost of the refunding? And are the savings net of this cost? Another question that I think needs to be answered before this is passed. And then just finally, are the charts in Ms. Hennessy's PowerPoint available? I didn't, and I didn't go deep into the background. Were they online or not?
They were in the deep background.
Yes, they were, yeah.
In the deep background. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, okay, now, that will allow, I think, Ms. Hennessy and city manager Nicholas to...
I can say...
Perhaps address that, and then we will...
Steve will be relieved to know that we've been paying our debt.
So, yes, the interest has been being paid on the outstanding 2010 bonds, uh, every six months.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yes, interest has been paid every six months on the outstanding 2010B bonds. I think that was your first question. And then your second question, are the savings net of the cost of issuance? And they are. So, those represent the true savings to the city. The cost of issuance is estimated at $29,750 for the private placement approach.
It's in a big chart there.
Okay. Thank you. City manager Nicholas, did you have anything further?
Just recommend, recommend your approval.
It's been moved and seconded that we, uh, pass this ordinance here on first reading. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
This ordinance passes on first reading.
I'd like to move that we waive second reading and approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Favor, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any discussion? Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
That ordinance is approved. Thank you very much. Okay, now, uh, we reached the point on the agenda where we have reports from any council member who would like to, uh, make some comments. So, we'll start with Alderman Morris.
Nothing to report.
Second ward, Alderman. Bill Fanouken.
I'd like to congratulate the, the Calh football barbs on their win over Sickmore the other night, 13 to nothing, and wish them success to rest away, and for the Huskies to have continued success.
Thank you. Alderman Smith from our third ward.
He always takes my thunder. No report.
Alderman Fagan from the fourth ward.
Yeah, I'd like to say something. Um, last city council meeting, we sat for an hour and listened about the clerk's position. Before that, we sat and listened for an hour with people that came in here, talked about their life, their housing problem, and the low part of their life. And it's pretty tough for a person to get up here and get a microphone and talk that way, and talk about themselves, especially about their low points in their life. And I'm talking about the housing situation we have in town. And what do we do afterwards? Let's have a special meeting about the clerk. We've gotta address the housing situation here. If we put our energy in the right direction, um, and that would be the housing. Have you, if you look at what's going on in DeCalb, that housing is a common denominator. It, it affects our values of our property, affects crime, all our resources that are sucked up into the northwest section of town. And why we're not talking about that and spending more time on issues that are not the problem. We're, the, the main concern is, you know, people in DeCalb say to me, "I don't, I'm tired of listening about the clerk's position." I'm, I, I don't care. And, you know, I've got other people that send emails to me and say, "You know, when somebody comes into town, they don't look at the relationship of the mayor, the city manager, the city clerk. They're looking at the values of the home, quality of life, roads, schools, shopping, and that's what we ought to focus on." Thank you.
You got, you, you got that off your chest, didn't you?
I was about to make it all two weeks.
Alderman McAdams from our fifth ward.
No report.
And from our sixth ward, Alderman Verbic.
No report.
And finally, from our seventh ward, Alderman Favor.
So, I did want to, uh, remind everyone about the Corn Classic coming up September 29th, 10K, 5K race. It was in the city e-news. It was nice to read it in there. One of the neat features this year is, uh, that they have teams. You could sign up as teams, and I don't know if it's too late or not, but I could see a city team. That would be, uh, kinda nice. of nice. I actually heard that one of our local businesses has, I think, 45 people on their team already. So, that's a great event. It's going to be, again, September 29th, and then afterward is the Taste of DeKalb down at Palmer Court.
I'm going to be delivering a speech tomorrow to the Sunrise Rotary, which has that truck fair, and I'm sure they're going to be bending my ear a little bit on that, among other things. And, but, yeah, it's a great event, a lot of people. And another great event that I'd like to mention, before I turn it over to our city clerk for any report that she might like to make, and that is that this Thursday, from 3 until 5, I believe, the Antiglen North group that is moving forward with addressing some of the suggestions that we make in the Antiglen North area, is holding a picnic of sorts, a reception at Welsh Park. And Welsh Park, as you know, is one of those geographical areas that we feel, through the collaboration with the DeKalb Park District, that we can improve that piece of property, which is a vital green area within the Antiglen North area. So, if anybody can get out there on Thursday, Chad Glover, who is the spearhead of this, assures me that there will be some grilled hot dogs and other things. So, come on out if you can. That's this Thursday afternoon at Welsh Park. With that, our city clerk, Lynn Fizikas, anything to report?
Just very quickly, there was a comment made earlier tonight that people who might be doing business in DeKalb could go next door and get a permit in one day. If you're talking about Sycamore, they have a full-time elected clerk and a part-time deputy. If you're talking about Cortland, ditto. That's all.
Thank you. City Manager, Bill Nicholas.
No report.
Okay, we have now reached the point on the agenda where I'm going to entertain a motion to go into recess for executive session, and we would like to go into executive session to discuss, A, personnel as provided for in 5 ILC S120/2C1, B, executive session minutes as provided for in 5 ILC S120/2C21, and C, to discuss pending or imminent litigation as provided for in 5 ILC S120/2C11. I'd entertain a motion to recess into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Excuse me. Alderman Verbic.
Just a consideration for council. If there would be any way in the future that we could hold executive session before the regular meeting. For example, begin council workshop at 5:00 PM, and then perhaps budget time from 6 to 7 for executive session, and then start the regular meeting at 7:00. I think that all of us would perhaps be able to function more effectively and be less tired to make what are very important considerations.
So, that's a suggestion. I'd just like to get some consensus. Does that make sense? Instead of holding executive sessions at this point? We don't always go into executive sessions.
And that's just it. And that's, we're just pushing everyone back here. So, if we did that, everybody sitting out here would be, be court tonight.
Alderman Favor.
My only concern with that is the, again, the irregularity of the executive sessions where if somebody's used to coming to city council meeting at 6:00 PM, and then they show up at 6:00 PM and we're all in executive session for an hour. So, that would be my concern, is notification to the, to the general public.
That the meeting would start at 7:00. Right.
Right. So, then, are you suggesting, then, that we have a 5:00 PM cow and a 7:00 PM regular meeting?
When, when appropriate.
Alderman McAdams.
It might be a good idea to start the meetings at 7:00, starting in January. I know we are required, through OMA reporting, to report through the year when our meetings begin. But if we started in January at 7:00, it might increase attendance.
Alderman Fanouken.
One of the reasons that meetings were moved up from 7:00 to 6:00 was because of how late meetings were going to begin with. And if you recall, we've had some lengthy meetings here in the last six months to a year. I would strongly recommend, again, starting regular council meetings at 7:00, just for that very effect reason. Thank you.
At 7:00?
I, I recommend against it, yes.
Against at 7:00?
That we continue to start at 6:00.
Right, right. Yeah. Tonight's meeting, the combination of the cow and the city council was, was unusual. We have done a nice job, I think, over the past several years now of, of trying to adhere to that 5:00 to 6:00, and then 6:00 to 7:00. Tonight, we had two items, both of which were important enough, I think, to have garnered the discussion that we did have, and so I don't think we should take this particular meeting as indicative. Just as a straw poll, how many here would prefer that we keep it at 6:00 as a start? One, two, three, four, yeah, and I would, too. So, Mike, I think we'll stay on that, but let, if we need to tweak something down the line, I'm certainly open to that. Does that make sense? Yeah?
Yeah, and if we don't have enough content for a workshop before the meeting, then perhaps there's time we could budget for executive session before a-
Oh, I see what you mean.
Before a 6:00 o'clock meeting.
Yeah, okay.
In other words, Mike, you're suggesting on those nights when there is no cow, that we would do exec, call cow in the session, and then go right into exec, please.
Is that something that we could do? John and Bill?
Well, I'm a little concerned about having the times for the meetings vacillate up and down depending on-
No, we're not talking about that. We would still have our city council meeting at 6:00. We would have any cow at 5:00. What has been suggested is that on those evenings where we may not have a committee at the hall, we could schedule a executive session at 5:00 or 5:30, to still start the city council meeting properly at 6:00.
The executive session is still part of the regular board meeting, really.
Right, that's-
So, you're looking at potentially adding, you're potentially adding confusion into the mix, and then one day you're starting at 5:00 in an executive session, or 6:00 in executive session, and then coming back. Other days you're not-
Oh, I see, yeah.
It could create some level of-
And you publish your, your list of times and days once a year by ordinance. You'd have to change this.
I understand that now.
Okay.
Well, let me, let's-
Let me ask a question, if I may, though. Do we not occasionally have executive sessions during cow? And that, so the suggestion was that there's a night where we're not having anything on a, on a committee at the hall, but we do need to have an executive session that night. We could still have quote-unquote a cow.
I don't believe there's been an executive, I, I think that used to be the practice, but I don't believe we've had that since January 1st. I don't think about that.
All right, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, I guess we're going to keep status quo now, but I appreciate the, the suggestion. Okay? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to recess into executive session. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
We appreciate everyone's attendance, who, and their patience tonight, who, those of you in the audience, and those who are watching at home. Right now, it has been moved and seconded and approved that we recess into executive session. This is in recess.